The Monday, October 26, 2020 meeting of the Market City Commission is now called to order at 6:00 PM. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, roll call, please.
Commissioner Bonzal?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Frazier?
Here.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Here.
Mayor Protem Hill?
Here.
And Mayor Smith?
Here. Thank you. Commissioners, we have an agenda in front of us. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Frazier?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Davis?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. Brings me to announcements. I've got several vacancies here. I will list. One note is that it's pretty easy to serve on these boards right now because most of them are happening via Zoom. So keep that in mind if you're thinking about signing up for something. Hopefully that won't last for too long, but at least right now, a lot of those are a little bit easier to get around to. So we've got vacancies on the Board of Review, Board of Zoning Appeals, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, Downtown Development Authority, Harbor Advisory Committee, Investment Advisory Board, Local Development Finance Authority, Local Officers Compensation Commission, Market Area Wastewater Treatment Advisory Board, Police Fire Pension Board, Prescott Isle Park Advisory Committee, Public Art Commission, and the Traffic Parking Advisory Committee. So quite a few opportunities. I would encourage folks to take a look on the City of Marquette website to find out more information. And it's a great way to serve your community. Moving on to boards and committees, very related. We have one appointment for consideration this evening. Do we have a motion on this appointment, Commissioners? Commissioner Schlegel?
Thank you, Mayor. I would make the motion to appoint Megan Morrison to the Downtown Development Authority, our term ending 1/01/25.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Davis?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Commissioner Schlegel?
I just think that Megan, looking at her credentials, is an absolutely perfect person for this position. And I thank her for her time spent on other areas and look forward to seeing what she can do here.
I will just echo what Commissioner Schlegel says and I really appreciate her interest.
Anyone else? Just wanted to add that I know Megan Morrison personally, and she will do a fantastic job in this role. I'm excited to see her stepping up. Thank you to Megan. All right. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. Brings us to public comment. Public comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Do we have anyone for public comment this evening? We've got one written that was submitted ahead of time. Just the one. Okay. City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. This comment was submitted by Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic in the City of Marquette. And she writes, "I thought the no smoking ordinance was to cover no smoking in public parks. Why does it include public spaces, buildings, businesses, and places of employment too? What's the idea behind requiring no smoking signs in grocery stores that can be seen from the checkout, at the meat counter, and at a product counter? Wouldn't one sign on the door, 'No Smoking,' cover the entire store? What is a municipal civil infraction and what sort of penalty, fine, imprisonment, or both, happens to you when you've been found guilty of a municipal civil infraction? Does this no smoking ordinance apply to food trucks, inside and outside? Where are the allowed smoking areas in Lakeview Arena? I didn't know you could smoke anywhere inside Lakeview Arena." Respectfully submitted, Margaret Brum.
Thank you. No one else for public comment? Okay. Seeing no additional comment, public comment is now closed. Brings us to item number two, public hearing, smoking ordinance number 690. City Clerk, could we please have the background?
At its regular meeting on August 31, 2020, the City Commission directed city staff to prepare a smoke-free ordinance for city parks, playgrounds, and beaches, while updating related sections of city code as necessary. Attached is a proposed ordinance for the commission's consideration. Tonight's public hearing was scheduled during the commission's regular meeting on October 13, 2020. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Recommendation: Following the public hearing, adopt ordinance number 690, which will amend Marquette City Code, Chapter 22, Environment, Article 3, Smoking. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. So I know we have this document available. If we had any modifications that we wanted to make, I just wanted also to say that this will be a roll call vote when we get to that point. I'm not sure if we have an interest in making a motion to, you know, approve this as written or if we want to discuss. I'm going to leave that up to the commission of what... Commissioner Davis?
Sorry, I'd like to make a motion to open this up for discussion.
Okay, does this bend the rules for discussion?
It's bend the rules, yes. Thank you.
Commissioner Frazier will second that motion. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion to suspend the rules, seven zero. Passes seven zero. Yes. City Attorney, Ron Keefe?
This is... Is this that for public hearing too?
Oh, yes, you're right. So...
Then you can go into your discussion.
So we should have the public hearing first?
Yeah, but you can go right into your discussion after that because the motion's already been passed.
Got it.
Do the public hearing.
Thank you. I had it mixed up in my notes here. All right. So we will go ahead and open the public hearing and then we'll come back for discussion. Public hearing is now open. Do we have any public hearing? We haven't had anyone call in or write in for the public hearing. So the public hearing is now closed. Okay, back to discussion. And Commissioner Davis, you made the motion. So if you'd like to start us off, that'd be great.
Sure. I am really pleased that we are taking a look at this particular ordinance and that we chose to wait on it from the last time it was before us. I know that these documents often look really simple to the general public, but they take a lot of thought and some research. And so I appreciate the time and the effort that the city staff has put into it. I have a few things that I'd like my fellow commissioners just to consider as we look at this. And the first one is the Section 2266 posting of signs that requires a lot of signage throughout the city. And as the public comment Margaret Brum talked about at different places in grocery stores. I think that the requirement of signage was very appropriate in 1999 when this was written. But I believe that our culture has changed and our expectations have changed. I would like to just see this whole section eliminated. I did a quick little tour of Washington Street with a notepad in hand. I was going to take note of who was in compliance with this and who wasn't. And I found zero people, zero businesses in compliance, including the city. So that's my reason for suggesting that we just eliminate that section. The other section in Lakeview Arena for Section 2270, I asked some questions of city staff about this, and it's my understanding that it is there right now because there is chewing tobacco problem within the arena. The language seems a little excessive once we have adopted all of these other parts of it. And I'm wondering if that language just could be simplified, just to make it clear that it's, that it is all of the other stuff plus the chewing tobacco. So that's my second one. And as long as I'm still on, I am going to ask my fellow commissioners to take a look at the city beaches and see if we want to change that from the beaches to the Marquette city-owned shoreline. And my rationale for that is that we really don't have specific boundaries on the beaches. And it's very difficult for... Well, it leaves a lot up to interpretation by the public and by those who are trying to enforce it. And if we are trying to protect our lake from pollution, it's not going to matter much if they are on one line versus the other line, where that beach stops and where it ends. I would prefer to protect the entire shoreline. So that's my other thing. And let me see if I have one more. Well, I'll just leave it right there for now.
Okay, sounds good. Commissioner Frazier?
I think it's a great idea for the city to go through with this because, I mean, the smoking ordinance was put in years ago with the bars and restaurants. And everybody thought they'd get in trouble for it, but turned out a lot of places that make more money off food now than they did before. And it's great for everybody. It's great for the parks too because I know the Lower Harbor's trying to get a new playground possibly. And it'd be great for the kids to be able to play on without somebody just sitting there smoking the whole time. And, you know, people are ready to smoke what they want, but, you know, it's uncomfortable when you're trying to go for a walk around, like, say, doing the bike path, I call it the loop, around the Lower Harbor Perk. It's a place that the bench are up in the field, just, you know, puffing away. And it's uncomfortable to smell, you know, with everything going on with masks and stuff like that. But, I mean, there's no thing that, if they're six feet away from somebody who's smoking, because you can smell from cars, so it's different. And it's great. And I agree with Commissioner Davis there. Maybe instead, you know, obviously keep the beaches intact, but since most of the beaches in town are along the city bike path, we could say like from the bike path to the lake, no smoking, you know, basically because the bike path would be included based on city ordinance, you know, because, you know, it could be, you know, we're going to be too kind. Let's say, any city buildings, any city property, like the bike path to the lake, I agree it's a good idea because, you know, there's somebody walking the bike path, the kids, stuff like that's a good idea. And biking and stuff like that. So I agree. It's good. I would like to have the beaches too and parks. That's a good idea. And, you know, it'd be hard, it's gonna be hard for the, to enforce the whole bike path. But, you know, at least they, it can give the cops a little bit of depth, the park patrol to say, okay, from the parking lot to the beach, you know, no smoking, that's a good idea. Good thing you put that in there. And like I said, it's a great idea because I know when, when I was younger in this playground, stuff like that, it was good to have. And for the, of course, for the, you know, a lot of the parents work and the elderly take them to the playground. And so they have, you know, different, you know, lungs and stuff like that. So it's good for them to do their stuff too. So I think it's a great idea to get no smoking everywhere.
Other Commissioners? Commissioner Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to reiterate, I guess, in support of a couple of the valuable points that Commissioner Davis made about the signage requirements and the idea of just applying this to the entire city-owned public shoreline. I think those are both fine ideas. I did have a couple of other points that I wanted to, or questions, I guess, I wanted to ask. So I'm just curious, there are two documents that we have. There's the draft ordinance, and then there is a redlined ordinance that has tracked all of the additions and deletions that were made by city staff in preparing this draft ordinance. And my question is, the provisions relating to smoking in restaurants and bars, the workplace, other places of public accommodation, were those provisions already in place before this updated ordinance? Or are they not being impacted by this amendment to the existing city ordinances? Or would we essentially be dramatically expanding the regulation and prohibition on smoking by doing this and applying it to not only city parks, but also restaurants, bars, the workplace?
I would suggest a question to the attorney.
Ron, were you able to hear that question from Commissioner Bonzal?
Yes, I did, Your Honor.
Would you mind to help us with that, please?
Yeah, if I could just kind of start, not necessarily from the beginning, but as someone said, state law has been in effect for over a decade regulating smoking. And all the things about signage and bars and restaurants, that's all state law. So whether we have a sign ordinance, signage in ours or not, it probably doesn't matter because it's all, like I said, it's state law. And in this particular case where this came to us was the commission wanted a no smoking at city parks and beaches. And that's what we put together. We, there is one other, one or two adjustments that Kyle can explain. But essentially, we added to the existing ordinance with a couple of exceptions. And just looking at the state law and our ordinance, really, there are three things that we've done that are outside, you might say, of state law. Parks and beaches, that's one and two. And then the 50-foot distance from an enclosed area where food is being, you know, served and you could ventilate, smoke in it, that would include food trucks. So smoking has to be at least 50 feet outside any enclosed area where smoking is prohibited to ensure that tobacco smoke does not enter the area through entrances, windows, ventilation systems, and other means. That's ours too, and that would apply to food trucks and restaurants, et cetera. But essentially, what we've codified here way back when we did this ordinance, and Kyle would have the date on that, is we've got state law and we added a, we've added a few additions of our own, our own, practically, beaches and parks. And like I said, signage isn't important. Lakeview Arena, we had actually, I'll let John speak to that. Our initial thought was to just leave that provision out, and John can explain why he wants it in. Of course, that's a commission decision. The shoreline issue that Commissioner Davis raised, the only issue we have with that is there is a, there will be a notice problem unless we've got all those boundaries set out in some kind of a guidance and signage and posting, which actually means we'll have more signage than less. But we can identify parks, beaches, and city parks because we've adopted them by resolution or through the master plan in some fashion. I really, I'm concerned about the enforcement of just designating offshorelines as non-smoking. You're getting pretty close to designing the city as a non-smoking area. And while I wouldn't be opposed to that, I'm just not sure about the enforcement problem with it, whether we could. So that's my answer to those, and I'd be glad to take any other questions. But I think Kyle could probably fill in a couple gaps about things that were adjusted from the current ordinance.
Kyle, or City Clerk, if you don't mind?
Yeah. So to Commissioner Bonzal's point, and kind of filling in the timeline a little bit there, I didn't dig back for the exact date. All you can tell under the current code as far as date is that our smoking ordinance as it currently stands was adopted and in effect in 1999. So that's the point in time that we re-codified the current code. That's the oldest reference. So I could go back and find it with some effort, but it's at least 21 years old. So at that point in time, the state law was not as strict as it is now on limiting those aspects. So we have in our local regulations limitations on smoking in restaurants, on bars, seating capacity, stores. And then the state law, essentially the non-smoking law in the state of Michigan, went into effect in 2010, which overrides a lot of what was existing in our current code. So the redlined versions that you're seeing is us eliminating references to bars, eliminating references to prohibiting smoking in bars, in restaurants, in retail tobacco stores, in bingo halls, simply because that's already something that's governed under state law. In addition to that, there's, there were a couple of minor changes, I guess. The public commenter had asked about municipal civil infractions. That is something that historically, we have said something is a municipal civil infraction. And then we've identified throughout the code how much the fine for that specific infraction is. And a couple of years ago, with Gary's assistance, we tried to clean that up a bit. So that now, whenever we open up a section of the code, rather than setting a specific fine for every municipal civil infraction, we just call it an infraction. And then in the budget every year, as part of the fee schedule, you guys set a... budget every year, as part of the fee schedule, you guys set a schedule for those civil infractions. I think it's $50 for a first offense, $100 for a second offense. And then updating based on comments from last time, we did add the exception of rented campsites to tourist park, a couple of minor changes like that. So a lot of this was cleaning up, as opposed to just adding, you know, beaches and parks, a lot of this was going back and just cleaning up the surrounding code to try to, you know, make it so it's not redundant with state law, telling you, you can't smoke in a public restaurant when you already can't. If you have any more specific questions, I can try to help as well.
Other commissioners? I brought in Helen.
Yeah, I, thank you, that's very helpful, both attorney and clerk. I wondered about calling out the bike path in particular, because I've looked over the list now, I don't see it there, and I guess, there's also that question, it's also the North Country Trail, it's also the Ironor Heritage Trail in parts, I wondered if that had any, well, on the waterfront it is, and then, of course, it goes through town as the Ironor Heritage Trail, and did we want to, that also wasn't included, so how was that, and is that, and then that, sorry, and then that made me think about sidewalks, which you are currently, it looks like, allowed to smoke on. So there's the sidewalk question, the Ironor Heritage Trail question, and the bike path on the lakefront question, I guess.
Sure, I can, I already forgot one of those, I think, but I'll, sidewalks to start. So as the attorney mentioned, as currently proposed, and as currently enforced, actually, you may not smoke within 20 feet of an enclosed area, which is any of those public businesses, restaurants, retail establishments, you can't smoke within 20 feet of the entrance to one of those. So, I mean, maybe it's an enforcement question, but I would say, a lot of sidewalks in the city are fronting businesses that you're not allowed to smoke in. I don't know how that actually stacks up. The list of parks and beaches is something, I know we have lists of what we consider parks in the Parks and Rec Master Plan, I honestly don't know, I think this list is a John and Ron discussion, this was in the original draft from a couple months ago. We did add this time around, you'll see it says prohibition on city property, it's prohibited on city beaches, city parks, and then we added in item three, all additional city parks and beaches designated by resolution of the city commission. The idea being, in the future, if we were to bring a new park online, or if the commission wanted to add something to this list, you wouldn't have to undertake an ordinance in amending this document in the same manner. And I think there was a third part that I might have missed.
Well, then, so it's not clear to me how the Ironor Heritage Trail falls into these categories, I don't know if that's a Ron or John question?
Yeah, I would try Ron or John.
Let me just, let me just say, Commissioner Hill, we were asked to do city beaches and parks, we could have maybe broadened it if it was appropriate, but we weren't instructed to do that, and we tried to stay within, you know, the direction from the city commission, and they wanted beaches and parks excluded. We tried to identify every beach and park that we were aware of, and we have a caveat that allows us to add additional parks simply by resolution or beaches, without going back and amending the ordinance, so that, we thought that was kind of what we wanted to accomplish based on what the direction we were given. If other areas are to be restricted from smoking, I guess we would have to know that, and we could go back and come up with another plan.
Well, I guess, but the question is, what is the Ironor Heritage Trail? That's my actual question. Is it a park, or is it something else?
I don't think it's a city park.
A city park?
It's, it is or it isn't, I can't.
It wouldn't be a city park. I think the Ironor Heritage Trail is a designation of a set.
Yes, it would be.
What do you say, go ahead.
It would be. Yes, it would be, Your Honor.
Wouldn't be a city park?
The Ironor Heritage Trail, as it exists in the city of Marquette, only extends from the boundary of the city into the Ordoch. That is the Ironor Heritage Trail.
Yeah.
And then it folds into the rest of the city trails to really perform that function. But it's my understanding that that, and then it takes the angle and goes down to Harvey, makes that run. So they're not synonymous, other than morally synonymous. I don't believe the city has received any funding from the Ironor Heritage Trails particularly.
So, that's an open.
So, I mean, so it's a legal point, and we'll have to see how we can wash that out.
I'm not, I'm actually, and I'm fine with leaving it out of the smoking conversation, I think it's actually an interesting question of what it actually is legally, this is a separate question, I acknowledge that, so I'm willing to move on that. And I just wanted to say, and my last point is about Lakeview Arena, I guess, to me, that I was, I wasn't curious, I found that language in 2269 to be okay, I didn't understand, because I didn't understand your concerns, and I did want to understand your concern, Commissioner Davis, for that, what was going on with Lakeview Arena.
Okay. My concern wasn't that, well, the language seems excessive, because when I asked the question, the concern was chewing tobacco. So, all of the other requirements of this ordinance would cover smoking in Lakeview Arena. So, to reiterate that there's no smoking in Lakeview Arena seemed redundant, except that they wanted to add the chewing tobacco, which isn't clearly stated in here.
Any tobacco product there at the beginning?
Well, yeah, you have, you have to, there's a leap you have to make to assume that.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes, I'm not. Thank you. And I'm gonna assume here, and it's probably not the right thing to do, but we all recall back when hockey was being played at Lakeview, there was smoking in the donors' room. So this goes back to those times when, you know, we were still able to do that kind of thing, so maybe that's part of the reason that it was in there originally, for, to allow smoking at one point, because it was allowed. Just a comment. Some clarification for some of the people that I've spoken to over the last couple of weeks in regards to this. This is completely separate from the marijuana designations and everything else that goes with that, that's all written in its own ordinance, and this is strictly tobacco as it is written. A couple of questions I have in regards to that is, the hardest one for me, and I'm gonna give you a minute, maybe the chief's here, but, you know, how do we really plan on enforcing this without, this is my biggest issue, you know. I think it's a very good idea, I think it's what's right for the community, but if we're not gonna religiously enforce this, then I really think that we're kind of just, maybe should be rewriting this and letting it lie, in hopes that society changes its habits, which it, you know, truly is, I think, in its own way. So that's a question that I have, you know, if these guys can say that we're gonna enforce this, and we're not going to, you know, just pick and choose, then I'll certainly support this, but I can't support it if I know that it's not gonna be enforced. Is vaping, maybe this is something for the city attorney, is vaping included with this? Because I don't see any vaping with the marijuana, there's no verbiage with vaping. And then my final question is, when it comes time for any kind of festival down at the harbor, or any of our other parks, how is smoking incorporated, or is it completely not incorporated, you know, is it banned? Or can the Blues Fest, or Seafood Fest, or any other festival that we have down there, could they cordon off an area and have a smoking-specific area? Is that allowed, or are we just saying absolutely no smoking whatsoever?
We want to have.
With respect.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Ron, thank you.
I was gonna say, with respect to the first one, vaping is not included in it, so that's, that is not part of this ordinance. I thought that, and maybe Kyle can address this one, about the issue of that Commissioner Schlegel raised about the festivals. It seemed at one time, I don't know if the existing ordinance has it in, but at one time did we have a carve-out?
That's what I'm remembering, too.
Does Kyle have anything on that?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there is specifically anything in here that calls it out. There is a section that says, yeah, no, there's nothing, there's nothing that would leave a clear loophole where you could have a smoking area at a festival, as I'm reading it currently. There was not, I didn't take anything out from the previous draft of this. I will say, the marijuana ordinance does have something that is kind of similar, I guess, in intent, I think, as far as, you know, festivals and outdoor. It leaves a door open for things like that, at least.
It's written in the permit?
Through additional commission action. I mean, commission action would have to take place before that is ironed out, but.
It looks like our CFO, Gary Simpson, had something to add on this.
Yes, thank you. I was just gonna suggest that we had maybe John Swinson address that, and he could also address, I know there have been several comments and questions about Lakeview Arena, that maybe John could address those as well.
Sure, yeah, John, maybe if you could address the Lakeview Arena and the potential events, and then maybe after that, I'm wondering if Blake Chief Rebold can come up and talk about enforcement.
Yeah, can you hear me all right?
Yep, go ahead, John, thank you.
Okay. I guess we'll start with Lakeview Arena. We added that back into the mix, the whole section was struck at one point, but we do have occasional issues with players spitting tobacco on the ice, and we've always pointed to section 22-69 as sort of the mechanism that makes that not legal. I would be not opposed at all to editing that section, basically just deleting everything after the word "Lakeview Arena," so, or designated fire official in Lakeview Arena period, and deleting the rest of it, I think that would probably make it make a lot more sense. So that's Lakeview Arena, and that's why we put that back in. It's not conducive to good quality ice to have, you know, tobacco with it on it.
And, John, before you get off that topic, could you explain again, maybe what you just said about deleting it after a certain point? I was trying to find where you were talking about, and I'm not clear.
Yeah, so in section 22-69, the first full, it's all one sentence above the 1, 2, 3 bullet points, and that sentence, I would suggest ending that at Lakeview Arena, crossing out except in areas specifically designated and approved by the fire team and posted to allow smoking. And then I, we talked, I talked with the city clerk today, and we also agreed that maybe 1, 2, and 3 didn't make sense anymore, based on the rest of the ordinance and state law, so.
So dropping 1, 2, and 3.
I would suggest ending section 22-69 after the word "Lakeview Arena."
So I don't know exactly how we're gonna do this, but we've got a few potential changes we're trying to keep track of, and then someone might need to make a motion. I'm wondering if maybe we can pull it up on the screen and make this change right now, because it seems like it's a good idea, but obviously that's up to a commission vote, it's kind of tricky. Well, I think we're gonna move on, or make a motion on the whole, the whole thing, unless, Ron, you think we need to do this piece by piece.
No, I think we can do it by the, do it as a one ordinance, but I think making the change, that it's probably gonna make sense, you're redlining, it makes sense now to do that.
Okay, so, thank you, Sean, for having it up, and it sounds like, kind of in the third line down where it says "Lakeview Arena," oh, he's gonna share it, so everyone in the audience online can see, the third line down on that Lakeview Arena, where it says "In Lakeview Arena," right after that, that would end it, "In Lakeview Arena, full stop," everything after that would go, according to what John is recommending.
Does that look right?
Correct.
Yes.
You'll need a period, but you're, you've got it. Okay, so, that's one change that we've made at this point, and then, so that's Lakeview Arena, do you have anything else on Lakeview Arena, John, that you wanted to add?
No, do you want to discuss special events right now?
Yes, please, go ahead, thank you.
Okay. So, special events, and the city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, but it was my impression that we could, we have lots of things in the special event permit that are not normally allowed in parks, and they are flying items that are either checked or specifically filled out in the permit to allow different activities. So I would think that it, unless there's something within the ordinance, as the city attorney and the city clerk have written it, that would prohibit it, I would think we could definitely carve out a designated space for those events within that permit process.
And I guess, I would just ask, from a city staff perspective, if it's easier to have it in the permit process, or in the ordinance, or both?
Permit.
I think it'd be part of the ordinance myself.
Can I?
They have to.
Everyone else is the same, permit process here, Ron, you know, you can't read the room like we all can, but.
Your Honor, can I?
Oh, you gotta know, you know, I'll let, you know, whatever can, whatever will accommodate it, but it's, we're gonna prohibit smoking in, at Matson Park.
Mm-hmm.
You know, you could put Matson Park, come, except in designated, areas designated by the city, or something like that, but that's, I don't know what John thinks about that.
City clerk has a comment here.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, attempting to kind of thread that needle, I guess. 22-60 prohibited in public places is where we end up listing all of the specific locations it's prohibited. 1A, no person shall smoke in a public place, yada, yada, except as permitted in this article. You could easily add on to that sentence to say, as permitted in this article, or under a special events permit, city special events permit.
That sounds perfect, let's add that in.
I'd agree with that.
Thank you.
That works great for me.
Okay. So two, two things clarified so far. I, you have a question? Go ahead, Commissioner Frazier, just quickly, I was gonna have Chief Rebold come up next.
Just real quick, Ron, this is, you know, any city property outdoors that the city owns that it are leased by, does that include, like, the bike path that goes, you know, the main bike path that goes through the Lower Harbor up to the Priscilla? There's no, you know, could be, like Commissioner Davis said, doing the shoreline, but could that include, like, the bike path, maybe, I mean, we heard it divorced by, you know, just an idea?
Well, I suppose anything's up for debate, I just think that city parks, we actually designate these parks? We haven't designated any bike paths as city parks, so we'd have to have a separate, probably a separate category, I, you know, I don't know what Kyle thinks, but I would, you know, it's, they're not designated city parks.
At this point, the commission hasn't given the direction for the city attorney and city staff to designate the bike paths as a park or not smoking area.
It just says smoking.
Obviously up for discussion, but at this point, it's not on the list. Do you agree, Will? Would you mind coming up and talk about enforcement of this potential ordinance, please? Well, it's already enforced, updated ordinance.
Sure. I guess I would like to start off with, you know, a lot of good questions have been raised as far as the ordinance goes. We're charged, obviously, ultimately, with the ultimate enforcement of it, should violations be occurring. And to Commissioner Schlegel's comment about supporting it, whether or not it's gonna be enforced, I think we're all kind of charged with a little bit of enforcement. You know, ultimately, we're the ones that'll be dealing with the actual issue of citation, should that happen, but I think through a process of education, through a process of city staff, through signage, which I think is important in certain areas, should enforcement be needed, is something that we will all kind of evaluate and look for a strategy to deal with. You know, obviously, we're not gonna be hiding in the bushes, you know, looking for smokers, but, you know, I mean, I think ultimately, right now, there is nothing on the books as far as, like, the teeth for enforcement, and I think that's kind of what has happened here with the increase of the people using beaches, the littering issues, the drinking issues and everything, this is kind of all rolled into getting this ordinance in place. So, you know, we'll work with staff to formulate ways in which we think enforcement will be good, obviously, education, and, you know, kind of an easy, soft opening, so to speak, would be, would be our main goal right now, but should violations occur and the individuals are not listening to reason, then enforcement would be an option, where we don't have that right now.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yeah, thank you, and that's really exactly what I was hoping you were gonna come up with, because...
come up with, because there's so many other more important things that we need you guys to be concerned about, you know?
Yeah, there's a lot.
This is, this is one of those things where I'm just like, ah, I wish we could just, you know, uh, I'll get along with it and, and not have to worry about it, but of course, we wouldn't expect you guys to, to literally sit and, and, you know, run people down because they're having a cigarette, but it, it really comes down to exactly what you said. It's the education piece, it's the, you know, potential for some signage, and us as a community to kind of work together and, and to help you guys. I mean, it really is, it's no different than us going to Prescott Island saying, "Hey, uh, just so you know, you, you need to put your dog back in the car because that's not allowed out here right now, and I'm just trying to save you a headache," you know?
Yes.
Uh, you could be, potentially, you could be ticketed, and, and that's the kind of police thing that I think that we as a community really need to embrace, um, being kind to one another and, and, you know, not, uh, not trying to make an issue out of anything that doesn't need to be made an issue, but really, it's just a matter of, of, you know, doing it in a polite and kind manner, and, and if it needs to go any further than that, then of course, there's, there's that opportunity, but, you know, that's what I, that's how I see this happening, and, um, thank you for your comments.
And I, I agree with you 100%. I mean, after, after the summer, seeing the number of people that have come to our community, um, you know, and not knowing what they can do, what they can't do, um, I think it's important for our community to help educate visitors to this area, uh, of, of the, the good and the bad that, um, can happen while you're here, so.
Thank you, Chief. Much appreciated. Do we have other questions for the chief? Commissioner Stonehouse? Oh, not for the chief? Oh, okay. I think, I think we're, I'm just, oh, you had a quick one for Chief Rebold? Go ahead, Commissioner Frasier.
Blake, 'cause every, you know, you used to have the bike, the bike patrol up and down the road, you could maybe lean on him, just, uh, keep an eye on things, you know, instead of send a car down there to go if people are smoking, just have them go for a bike, you know, doing the bike ride, you could just kind of patrol all the parks, you know, just kind of cruise by, you're not gonna stop everybody, I mean, we all know that, I mean, I see, the hospitals try to do that with no smoking, I see people smoking right underneath the signs, so you're not gonna stop everybody, but you just keep an eye on things, one thing to look at, you know?
Yeah, I think the city has a lot of assets in place, between the lifeguards, between public works, uh, between the bike patrol, between, um, park patrol and stuff, so I, I think we have a lot of assets that we could utilize to help keep an eye on that should it pass, so.
Thank you, Chief Rebold. Appreciate it.
Yep, sure.
Um, Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your honor, just, uh, so we don't think we're exactly leading the way on this. Uh, I did a little research today on those Michigan cities that have park and beach smoking-free policies, and they're really quite surprising, Traverse City as we might expect, but City Vesconaba, Grand Haven, Newbury, Houghton, Sioux St. Marie, all have policies similar to what we're working on tonight. So I think that certainly lets us know that we're going in a direction that much of the public will accept. Thank you.
Good research. Thank you, Commissioner Stonehouse. Much appreciated. Commissioner Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I just had a, uh, one other question and then a comment to make. So this question is directed, I suppose, towards either the city attorney or the city clerk. Um, so why are we, I'm just, I was curious, as I was reading this draft ordinance, why we're making it specific to tobacco products and not other smokable substances? Like, I, I understand that vaping was a question that was already addressed, it was asked by Commissioner Schlegel, and I, I understand the rationale there, but I just seems, it just seems strange to me that we might treat tobacco differently from, say, marijuana that can, in like the smokable form, so just curious what the thought process was there, and, and if maybe that's sort of already covered by our marijuana ordinance?
It looks like City Clerk has an answer, but I, I do believe it is covered by the marijuana ordinance. Go ahead, City Clerk.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna say, um, with regard to marijuana, it is covered both by our ordinance and again by state law. You're not allowed to smoke marijuana in a public place, um, and the literal definitions of smoking and tobacco products, um, came from the state law. So we did, we changed the definition of smoking a bit, we added tobacco product because it's referenced in the definition of smoking, um, but both of those are mirroring state law.
And did you see it a comment, too?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. That, that does answer my question. I suspected that was the case. Um, but my comment was just that, um, so, one thing I was thinking about is that, and I think this was something that was brought up at our previous meeting where we discussed this item, um, so the bike path is exempted. It's not, this isn't going to apply towards the bike path. Um, and I was thinking that the Phil, by the same token, we should probably also consider exempting the Phil Nemezto Pocket Park and the Rosewood Walkway, because they're primarily used as pedestrian corridors rather than traditional public parks in a manner that's very similar to sidewalks, the bike path, et cetera.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes, thank you. I, actually, I would support Commissioner Bonzel's suggestion about Phil Nemezto and the, um, Rosewood Walkway. I think those are two areas that, um, are going to be more difficult to enforce, um, and maybe if, if things go well, we could add them later. Um, so I'll just throw that out there. I have two questions, I think. The first is, is there a way we can make accommodations, or perhaps there already are, for those ceremonial uses of tobacco for our indigenous population? Oh, you weren't, okay.
Talking to Sean.
What, what accommodations can we make for ceremonial use of tobacco for our Native Americans and indigenous population?
Um, so this might be a better question for Ron, but I was gonna suggest it might be covered by state law.
They're, they're perhaps already.
They are covered by state law.
And do you have?
There are exceptions.
There are exceptions?
Okay.
Yes, and I think one of them is religious ceremonies. I'm looking for it now, but I know it's in the state statute somewhere. Um, so we don't, we won't have that problem with this ordinance.
Okay, that's good. I'm, I'm glad to hear that. Um, so my second part is, I just need to clarify what I brought up earlier and your response to it. When I asked about section 22-66, the posting of signs, did I hear you say that that language is state law, and we're just reiterating the state language?
The, the state law, uh, I think what Kyle mentioned was the definition, certain definitions were, came, came right out of the statute, um, state law. As far as the signage, um, section, I don't know that that's from the state statute specifically. It may have even predated, predated it, um, but Kyle might know that, uh.
Uh, yeah, our.
I think my point, my point was simply that it's, signage is in the state law, whether we have it in our ordinance or not. State law really provides, uh, all the requirements for signage.
So, so you're saying that it is a state law for that kind of signage, and if that's the case, I'm concerned about our, um, compliance in our city?
Well, we have all kinds of laws on the books that we, you know, we should enforce, we can enforce, but I mean, those, you know, there's only so much that can be done. I mean, I'm not suggesting we don't do it, but as someone mentioned, the culture is so clear after well over a decade that no one even thinks of smoking when they go into a store anymore. I, I've never seen anybody in years with a cigarette.
So, Ron, your recommendation would be to leave that language in the ordinance?
I would leave that to Kyle. I could take, I could easily take it out. What, I, I, I would ask Kyle what he thinks.
Okay. Kyle, what do you think?
I'm 100% fine taking that out. Uh, state law does require, our code, which was written prior to the current state law, is oddly specific about where the signs go, especially in grocery stores, um, but state law does require no smoking signs posted at the, at the entrance and in every building or area where smoking is prohibited under state law. So, I mean, whether it's, whether it's local, uh, our local rules or state law, you're supposed to have a sign at least at the entrance of every building.
Okay, including the city buildings. Okay.
Well, it sounds like maybe we can take that section out. I'm not hearing any real strong indication we should leave it in.
I like Kyle's thumbs up. Thank you.
I don't know who said that. Thank you. I'm trying. Chief Rebold? Thank you. I'm looking at like for movement of lips and not seeing anything anywhere.
Just, just from an enforcement standpoint, um, I'm not sure if you're talking about the city-owned facilities or not, but for parks and beaches, we're gonna have to have signage for us to be able to legally enforce that, and I just wanted to make sure that we were aware of that.
Yes, this is the, um.
I am referring to businesses and, um, city buildings, county buildings.
I, I, I just missed that a little bit. I just wanted to make.
Yep, thank you for clarifying. So Sean, you're gonna take care of that for us, please?
Yeah, I just wanted to make clear that we wanted to get rid of that section.
Yes, 22-66.
Where did we land on the, um, the Phil Nemezto Pocket Park and Rosewood Walkway?
Hopefully we have a consensus there yet. It's kind of. You're on the list now.
On the list currently. I just need to know if I need to cross them out, or if.
I'm concerned about carve-outs causing confusion, frankly. I don't.
If I, if I could, Madam Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, John. Thank you.
Um, just wanted to, to make mention, as far as those two, uh, we did reach out to, uh, Becky with the DDA, and it was their preference that they be included, uh, so I don't know if that weighs in on your decision.
Weighs in on my decision. I could've gone either way, but if DDA wants to leave them in, I think leave them in, but I don't know. Uh, Commissioner Frasier?
John, Ron, maybe you guys, I mean, they're public, they're little like mini parks, but I mean, like downtown by the restaurants, the, by the little pocket park, and then the umbrella park. It should be included, you know, it should be under perks and rec, you know, it should be included with all the other perks. I just, that's my vision.
Mayor Protem Hill?
Well, and I think I, the, in addition to the public health benefits of the smoking, I heard from, um, several members of the public about the benefits of littering. I can imagine that the DDA would also be interested in this from a littering perspective, particularly on those two, because they are walkways and, and used as pedestrian walkways, and people will thoughtlessly throw cigarette butts down on the ground, so I could see, I, I wonder if there's a connection there. Um, I'm sorry to bring this up again, because I just, I guess I, I got lost, um, is with vaping, um, because it is, unfortunately, our younger people are vaping, and it is a, it's a health threat, um, and I don't understand right now where that stands. Um, could somebody just help me understand where we are with it right now?
City Clerk, do you have a explanation?
Yeah, oh, I mean, relative to, to this current ordinance, it is not in there. Um, I would say kind of like a couple of things that have come up tonight. Um, when deciding what to put in and what not to put in, I, I guess I didn't hear a, a clear consensus of the commission to add that in. Um, we can certainly add it in, in, in follow-up, but right now, it's not in there. There's no definition, and it's not included in the state smoking law, which was kind of a, a background for some of this.
But there was some action around banning it, because I remember, it was in the news, they were trying to ban it at some level.
I think it was flavored, um, it was like flavored pouches, or something like that, um, was banned, but I think on a, on a state level, I believe, it is still, uh, still permitted.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
I was just gonna suggest, Your Honor, that I think there's things like that that are still unsettled law, and I think the, the attorney would agree with that comment, that we allow them to settle before we decide we want to try and put them in an ordinance that would end up being a test ordinance for the state. Uh, we really have no reason to do that. I would also caution commissioners that we have a pretty good little ordinance here. It's leaning forward, it's a, it's a best leap forward the city of Marquette will have made for public health that I can ever remember, but the more we pile on, the more we think about, the bigger this becomes, and now it's an elephant. We don't want to make an elephant. We want a nice little ordinance that's gonna move the city public health forward. We have that. So I caution all of us that we don't try to keep tacking things onto it. We can always go back and do that later. We can do that on a relook as we did the, with the, the food truck ordinance. How's it working? What do we need to change? And keep that in mind. Thank you for your time.
Commissioner Frasier?
I agree with Commissioner Stonehouse. It's not, you know, we can always add stuff that if it's ordinance, but it's just, you, it's smoking, so we just say "smoking" in general, and maybe Blake or Kyle can add something there and says, "Here's the included smoking, I mean, cigarettes, tobacco, pot, you know, all the, all the things that's related to smoking could be included in there." I mean, just say "smoking" in general and includes anything to do with smoking, basically.
So I think at this point, we've had quite a bit of discussion. I'm, I'm wondering, Sean, if you can pull up the ordinance and we can look at the changes we've made so far to what was presented before this evening, and then what we have, um, as of right now, and then I'm wondering if a, a commissioner would be willing to make a motion.
Sure. Um, I think there was only three sections. The first one was 22-60. We added, um, "or under a special events permit."
Thank you.
And then we removed 22-66, posting of signs, and then we edited 22-69, Lakeview Arena.
Perfect. Is that removal of 22-66 gonna mess everything up with the numbers, probably? We'll fix that all later?
Yeah, all of the numbers, we'll move back one.
Okay, we'll, we'll worry about that after. The content is what we're looking at here. Okay. So at this point, commissioners, do we have a motion on this? Commissioner Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I move that we approve, uh, ordinance number 690, as it is currently written.
And we have a second. Commissioner Schlegel?
I'd second the motion.
Commissioner Bonzel, discussion?
I think that, uh, Commissioner Stonehouse said it very well, and he said, "I think this is the, one of the biggest steps forward the city has taken in public health in many years," and I think that this is the culmination of several years of discussion and debate, um, about this issue in general in the city of Marquette with smoking in public parks, and, um, I think that it'll also be a good thing environmentally. You think about the potential risks posed to Prescott Park, uh, you know, there were to be a fire there. So I think that although it may be an inconvenience for some residents, I think that the public benefits to the entire community far outweigh those inconveniences, and I'll be happy to support it.
Commissioner Schlegel?
I think you've pretty much nailed it there, Commissioner Bonzel, and Commissioner Stonehouse, thank you for that. Um, you know, I, I think back to when we, 10 years ago, when we did the ordinance change, or when the city implemented the rules that were set forth for the restaurants and, and stuff along with the state, and, um, and everybody got a little bit worried, especially the business owners. And now if you go and talk to those business owners, you're gonna see that, you know, it's actually been a, a windfall for them, uh, in many ways, and, uh, I just think that it's, it's where society is, is headed, you know, it's health, it's, uh, for the health and safety and well-being of our community, and we need to, uh, put something like this in place and, and then enforce it properly in order to make sure that, uh, we're doing things for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Other commissioners? That's it, huh? Okay. Um, City Clerk, could we please have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Bonzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Frasier?
Yep.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hill?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes 7-0. Next, we have the consent agenda. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Frasier?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
And we have a second. Commissioner Stonehouse? Great. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion passes 7-0. That brings us to public comment. Public comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Do we have anyone for public comment? We've got no one. Public comment is now closed. Now, moving on to comments from the commission, and we'll start off with Commissioner Bonzel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I think this is a productive meeting. I'm really happy to see that we moved forward with the, uh, prohibition on smoking in public parks and beaches and, you know, some updates to that related ordinance. I think it's a really positive step forward for the city. Um, also really happy to see, uh, in the consent agenda this evening, uh, the items around, you know, CARES Act, essential employee premiums, and first responder hazard pay. Um, I think it's really important that, um, you know, as, as a, a employee myself at the county, um, you know, I, I, I think that it's great that we're trying to reward our city employees for, and compensate them fairly for, you know, sort of, uh, putting themselves on the line. I mean, everybody in public service has to right now, um, with the current public health crisis. And, and that was the other point that I wanted to, to make, uh, during my commissioner comments tonight, is that there's, we've all received in the commission from the county health departments, some very concerning statistics the last few weeks about the rapid increase in COVID-19 cases that has occurred this month. Um, cases are rising very rapidly. They're, you know, the, the COVID-19 situation is worse in Marquette County right now than it probably has been at just about any point in this year. Um, and, and the interesting thing is that contrary to conventional wisdom, that's not primarily due to the prison population or to NMU students. It's actually primarily due, according to the county health department, to community spread. Um, that's not directly attributable to either of those populations. That's not directly attributable to either of those populations. So, you know, I, I think it's really important just to remember that, you know, how, but, but as a community, I think everybody should, in the community, should be thinking, you know, how, how much do, do I care about my neighbors, my family? How much do I care about supporting our local businesses and making sure they can stay open? How much do we care about public parks and facilities managing to stay open? How much do we care about youth sports, about our public schools remaining open? And if we really do care about all those things, which I'm sure that we all do, then let's do what it takes to protect those things and to protect those people. And that really just means wearing a mask like we're all doing tonight, social distancing, washing your hands frequently. If you just do those three things, if we can just do those three things, um, properly, you know, then hopefully we will get through this somewhat difficult time with COVID-19 in the county and the U.P. at la, at large. But certainly it's very concerning and I just really want to reiterate how important it is that we all take all the steps that we can. And then finally, just wanted to provide a brief update on the ad hoc housing committee. Um, I'm serving as the chair of the ad hoc housing committee. I was appointed to represent the commission on that committee, uh, back in January. We resumed meeting in August, as I think, I think I already informed the commission a couple of months ago. And, uh, since then, we've had several very productive meetings, uh, discussing a wide range of topics. You know, from, you know, property that might be available for redevelopment, uh, into, you know, more like low and middle income range housing to zoning reform to, you know, a wide range of other things that I'm sure, you know, obstacles for developers, um, other things that I'm sure we'll be talking about. And, uh, we are on track right now to, uh, meet our deadline for presenting a, uh, initial report with some policy recommendations, uh, to the commission, uh, by January 15th. And also, uh, just sort of an exciting update, in my opinion at least, is that, um, we've all heard the term missing middle housing many times, I'm sure. Well, we've heard that term thanks to a guy named, uh, Daniel Perolak, who is a very famous, uh, you know, an im, im, impactful planner and designer. And he created the phrase missing middle housing and has designed and developed a lot of missing middle housing in the country through his firm, Opticos Design in California. And the reason I mention this is because he and another fantastic, uh, missing middle housing developer from Michigan, Shannon Morgan, will be presenting to us at our December 8th meeting. And will be providing, sort of using the old hospital property as a case study for how we could even take very difficult to de, to develop properties like that old hospital, uh, land and potentially, you know, develop a, quite a bit of missing middle housing in the city of Marquette. And some creative approaches that can, that we can, we can bring to that. So that's a huge opportunity for the city to have that kind of expertise, you know, internationally renowned expertise, um, helping us craft those recommendations and chart a path forward. So I just wanted to provide a brief update on that.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Bonzel, thank you for your comments about our current health crisis. I couldn't have said it any better and I really would echo everything that you said. I'd love to see us not have to do any further lockdowns than we are. And I'd love to see the schools remain open and to reopen a lot of the places that we have not yet been able to open. I'm also very pleased with the work that we did on the ordinance tonight. And it, I think it's very important to update ordinance occasionally. And, um, this one hasn't really been looked at since 1999, or maybe it has and we haven't found any reason to, um, change it. But I really like the changes that have happened in this ornament. And I, I like to think of it as a living document. It's not going to be perfect. We will find some unintended consequences and the next time we take a look at it, we will improve it again and we will just work with it as it goes along. And eventually we'll get to where we want to be and maybe we already are. The signage that will have to happen at the parks and beaches is very important. I, um, am in favor of the city taking a good look at the, all of the signage that goes around at the parks and beaches to make it uniform and to make it welcoming to visitors and to the community. And so just give some thought to how that's going to happen because when signs are done correctly, people do listen to them and they, and that will be a good part of the enforcement. Thank you.
Commissioner Frazier?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A good meeting. We had a lot of stuff on the smoking ordinance. It's good. You know, just to, you know, help keep the beaches clean and I know my dad has business down on the lake and we had a big rainstorm and then a lot of the, the smoking ban, you know, or littering is actually on the roads. And all the road, water drains and drains, that whole storm drain or the lake. And I remember picking up like half a half gallon bucket of cigarette butts washed up to our, our property one time. It was just disappointing, so eventually it gets solved, you know. It's getting better by better. And I remember the restaurant out in, back in the day on Harvey, it was a local bar and even the smoking was so bad there that I had friends that smoked. I say, okay, go in, hold your breath, come back out and you'll see what I say. They go, they come back out. Wow, I'm a smoker and that was pretty bad in there. But in that, been a good six years. I've fun, give Mike hard time. Gary, give me a call if you need anything. I hope you have Mike. But it's been good and look forward, we got a good board now. It's good. I can see Evan being like Fred Stone on stage, you know, eventually being, oh, back in my day. And, you know, I can see Commissioner Bonzel doing that eventually.
Mayor Protem Hill?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Sorry, my protem hill. Sorry, sorry, Commissioner Stonehouse.
Apparently I'm now Commissioner Bonzel, but no, um, according to, but, uh, thank you, Pete, for your service and we'll recognize you too, I think, in November, but, um, I put in a number of years here. I, uh, wanted to say that yes, um, voting of course is gonna go through November 3rd. I confirmed with the clerk before the meeting, we will have voting here at city hall on Saturday, uh, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., if you want to come in early. And in addition, you can drop off your vote if you, um, have the, um, ballot you requested. You can drop it off at, uh, at the box there on Berwick Avenue. And, um, so please don't forget to get your vote in. Uh, of course, we have the, I mentioned this last time, the rubbish pickup is gonna be happening and they, by all accounts, uh, the, the snow should be melted in the next 48 hours and it'll magically go away. We can get our rubbish picked up and then the snow can come back. But the brush pickup and the compost, or excuse me, the brush and the leaves in front of our houses. The last day for, um, household rubbish is November 2nd. The compost site does go one, one more week until November 10th. And I did want to say thank you to, um, on this health crisis that we are facing. Uh, very well said by Commissioner Bonzel, um, that what I found interesting was the CDC has, um, travel restrictions to other countries if there's an incidence rate of more than three per 100,000. Currently in Marquette County, our number is 36 per 100,000. That was as of Saturday. That's a seven day moving average. So we are seeing uncontained spread and it is absolutely, we, our, our businesses are not going to be successful if we continue this. It is not a matter, as we all, as we know, that just, we have to get the virus. The virus is controlling, um, what people do right now and we do not want to have our hospitals and medical facilities, um, any more strained than they are right now. Do appreciate all the good work that's happening there, but we, um, it is, it is absolutely, as Commissioner Bonzel said, it is us, it is not the tourists. It is not, um, people coming in to go to school here. It is community spread among those of us who live here. So please wear your mask and stay safe.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, yeah, let's keep driving that home on the, uh, on the safety. And, and keep in mind, you know, for restaurants, you can do takeout. There's lots of small businesses out there that are just aching for your business. And we're talking about, you know, the storefronts in the DDA and anywhere else in the, in our community. If you have an opportunity to get out and do some early Christmas shopping and, and help those businesses, keep that money local, please do that because, you know, this is the livelihood. It's the dreams of many people that you're dealing with here. Get out and support small business in Marquette and Marquette County and anywhere local. Um, please. Uh, on the same line, the, the frontliners, you know, especially the, the nursing and, and doctors and, and, uh, the, the, everybody inside that hospital that's, uh, you know, doing their, their part to be a part of getting people healthy again, thank you so much for that. And if there's any way that you can possibly reach out and thank, um, members of that community, please do let them know how much we, uh, you know, the, the heroes on the front line that are doing that from EMTs to you name it, um, please reach out. The election, uh, next week, I'm not too proud to beg. I, I've thoroughly enjoyed my term here, um, filling in for the, the late Mayor Baldini. It was an honor to take that position on when I did it. I was honored to be, um, chosen from some very fine candidates. And, uh, I'm, I'm gonna be, uh, blunt in saying that, you know, I would be honored to have your vote for this next, uh, this next election coming through to continue to serve, uh, this community that I love so much. So please consider myself, uh, when it comes to your voting, if you haven't already voted. I'm one of those guys that enjoys walking into a big building, getting a, getting in a line and, and filling out the document myself, feeding it into the machine, grabbing my sticker and walking out. I, that kind of might be a little bit more of a prance on the way out because it's, it's, I really feel good when I cast my ballot. But the thing is, whether you've already voted or you're, you're waiting until, uh, next Tuesday to vote, get out and vote, um, whether it's, you know, for me or for anybody else. We've got a lot of great candidates running this, this time and, uh, I for one would be honored to have your vote. Thank you.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, thank you. Um, while we're talking about CV-19, you know, Europe's in a second or third wave. They're shutting down again. Certainly, uh, we're seeing that happen in the United States, particularly here in the Upper Peninsula. Cruise ships aren't going anywhere and that's an industry that is multi-billion dollars. Some of them are losing quite literally a billion every six months. So it remains certainly an extraordinary public health challenge to us. But it's also worth our understanding, uh, and perhaps looking at things a little differently than we might normally. You know, we get a number from public health department every day from Marquette County and it's a number today, I think it was 40. But public health is not transparent in telling us where those 40 come from. And I would illustrate this, uh, for example, we know that there's about 900 prisoners out at the branch prison. We know that 75% of them have become infected. Uh, many of them have been shipped out to the facilities. They don't count against the county's number. They're counted against the state. But they also have about 327 employees out there. About 42% have become infected and are reported against their county of residence and for us, that's Marquette County. So when you look at that 40 number or that 44, or that number that comes out every day, understand that there's numbers within numbers. And I would argue that there's things that we as a city, we as, as people living in Marquette County can do to help damp the virus down, follow the proper protocols and procedures. But if you're an employee at a state prison in that extraordinarily toxic environment, there's probably not much that anybody else is gonna do to keep the virus from you, just the environment that you're working in. So it would be very helpful if county health, for example, became transparent to the point of taking numbers out like that, uh, back it out of the 40, identify, we've got so many of this. We have so many people that are in assisted living facilities perhaps. So then you come to a number that you say, these are people that are out and about the community that maybe we can make a difference with. And focusing on that number and why that number is there as opposed to just a big number that is really meaningless because it's data, but it's not analyzed data. So my plea is for public health to begin to give us the transparency that all of us need so we can react in the method that would be most effective in damping this virus down. It would also be interesting to know, for example, again, as we look at data, how many people tested positive in the city of Marquette? How many tested in Gwin? How many tested in Nishme? How many tested in Marquette? In other words, to provide the municipality that the people were, had popped positive in. That can help identify where clusters are that might give us as normal residents of the area information that we can work with in making individual choices and decisions. That, of course, information is not forthcoming from county health. It is not a transparent organization. I would contrast that a little bit with Northern, who does a wonderful dashboard every day of what's happening, where, where the, the hotspots are, what they're doing about it, what the numbers are. If you go to county health and go to their dashboard, it doesn't exist. It doesn't exist for the public. And that's, as citizens, that's something that we should be very concerned with. That said, if, uh, if my good friend Paul Schlegel can ask for your vote, I will too. As I also am running, except for reelection as opposed for election. So thank you very much for your time, Your Honor.
Thank you. So along the, uh, Marquette County Health Department lines, I have been in communication with the health department and the board of health. They have invited me on Wednesday evening, um, to make some comments and I will be having some discussion with their board via Zoom on Wednesday evening, 6 o'clock, that is open to the public. So if, if folks are interested in what's going on, they're certainly able to tune in. The details will be on the Marquette County Health Department website. And after that point, I will be, um, summarizing how that discussion went and, and push that out on some of my social media so the public is aware of what those conversations are. Some of my concerns have already been expressed tonight and, um, they're by no means necessarily the fault of the public, you know, county health department, but the, the concerns in our county are community spread, the rising of cases, our positivity rate, our ICU capacity, and, um, also some delays in contact tracing. So those are things that I'm gonna be discussing with them on Wednesday evening and trying to, um, just, just let them know some of the ideas that I've had and conversations that we've had here. In addition to that, we do have a holiday coming up on Saturday, which is Halloween. Some consider it a holiday, some don't, but I wanted to, um, reiterate the fact that we have released Halloween guidelines for our residents here in the city of Marquette. Essentially, we're really encouraging one-way trick-or-treating. And if you're not familiar with what that means, really try to keep your distance from others and try to keep the traffic flowing. So you can either put a table out in your front yard, sanitized table with treats spaced out for, you know, kids to be able to grab and keep moving. Try to avoid the whole ringing of the doorbell, cluster of kids at the door situation. I think Commissioner Schlegel had mentioned to me on the phone something called sticker treat, um, where you put like a wooden stick with a candy on it spaced apart in the lawn and kids can grab them. Uh, someone else had shared this big PVC pipe that someone was shooting candy down. I don't know, get creative, but, but try to, you know, maybe sit in the lawn chair in your yard and, and keep the distance. If you're going to participate, it's also okay to not participate, either as a trick-or-treater or as a neighbor handing out candy this year. I think we all know this is a very strange year and, um, there's plenty of candy in the world. So it'll be okay if a few houses have their light off this year. I know for my family, we're just gonna take a walk in the neighborhood and look at the costumes if, if there's anyone out and about and we're gonna bring our own candy. So that's, that's our plan. And then finally, I just wanted to say, um, I guess it's not goodbye, but Commissioner Frazier, it's your last full meeting tonight. You will be at the next meeting, at least for a little bit, until the next person is, is called up. But I just wanted to say thank you for your six years of service on the, uh, Market City Commission. And, um, we've certainly appreciated your knowledge on, on things like boating and the lakeshore construction. You know a lot about concrete. It's incredible. We get into the construction stuff and you know a lot more than we do. And then also just, um, you know, the market history and your family legacy. And I, I certainly appreciate your service on this commission and, and you will be missed. So we'll see you next week, or in a couple of weeks too, but I just wanted to say it now. Yep, so, um, thank you to Commissioner Frazier. All right, that's all I have for this evening. Do we have any comments from our acting city manager, Gary Simpson?
Yes, I only have about 25 items, so.
Can we mute that microphone?
So grab a pillow and grab the popcorn. No, just a handful. No, just a handful of items. First of all, I want to thank the Public Works Department. It's quite the process they go through to transfer from summer operations to winter operations, and as everybody probably noticed this weekend, we had our first, I guess, really real snow, and so winter is coming, despite my efforts to try to cancel it this year. So I do want to thank Public Works crews for not only taking care of the roads, but also the sidewalks here at City Hall. There's quite a bit of traffic coming into City Hall, as Kyle can attest to, because they're all coming in to see Kyle and his staff. But I do want to thank Public Works for keeping the sidewalks clear and safe for all of our citizens coming in. I also want to say Mike will be back tomorrow, and so please, everybody, feel free to call Mike, and he particularly likes phone calls after 10:30 p.m. at night, so feel free to call him. And I had one other item, but it escapes me at the moment, so thank you.
Thank you. We are adjourned at 7:20 p.m.